councillor Ishwood has planned it very well, he's going to be away for a few meetings, and leaves me in the chair. I'm sure he'll enjoy the experience. So, welcome councillors, especially new councillors, our first joint planning committee of the new council, and welcome to all members of the public. I hope you enjoy the meeting and follow everything that's going on. The first item we need to discuss is fire regulations. On the screen alongside you in the public gallery or here on the main panel behind me are fire regulations. We have three emergency exits, the way we came in, behind the members at the back and to the right-hand side, and if there's no plans for any fire check at all, anybody, if a fire alarm goes then we depart as hastily as possible out of any of the doors and muster underneath the canopy of Waitrose. So, I hope that nothing comes forward on that.
Apologies, it's not working this evening, I'm sorry for that.
I apologise for misinforming you. So, the next item on the agenda is the minutes of the meeting of the 21st of April. Do you agree that I pass over those as a true record? Thank you. And any apologies for absence?
We have apologies from councillors Ishwood and Wheatley. Councillor Simon Inchbold is attending as a substitute, thank you.
Thank you very much. And any disclosures of interest?
Number saved before the meeting.
And questions from councillor Post?
With apologies, chairman. Could I disclose that I am a member of Farnham Town Council, that does have a planning group, I am not a member of that planning group, and therefore have come afresh to this application.
Thank you.
Chairman, can we just take that for all Farnham Town councillors who'll be here tonight?
Thank you very much. Any questions from members of the public?
Number saved, chairman.
Thank you very much. So, item A1, it is, get to the white page, WA 2015 0317, outline application with all matters reserved except access for the erection of up to 43 dwellings together with associated works following the demolition of existing equestrian buildings. This is a revision of WA 2014 2028, and is amended by details received on the 31st of March this year and the 6th of May this year, and it's at land at Baker Oats Stables, Gardeners Hill Road, Wrecklesham. Officers, can I ask you to begin your presentation?
Thank you very much, chairman. By way of introduction, I just wanted to start by emphasising some of the key issues to assess, to assist members' assessment this evening, and then go to pass over to Louise Yandell, the case officer, to take members through the plans in more detail. The first point is to remind members regarding the balancing exercise required to form a reasoned conclusion in relation to the application. This is a consideration of the balance of considerations and the weighing of the harm against the benefits of the proposal. Members will see from the report that planning permission was previously refused under the delegated powers of the head of planning for previous similar development on this site under reference WA 2014 2028. Now, there were five reasons for refusal in respect of the following matters. Firstly, harm to the character of the countryside and the setting of the settlement. Secondly, housing mix. Thirdly, failure to conclude legal agreements to mitigate the impact on first highways and then infrastructure, and then finally, an objection in terms of the impact on biodiversity. The report sets out these reasons in full, and Louise will expand upon these, but in short, in the previous scheme, the harm was considered to outweigh the benefits. Following changes to the scheme and the meeting of technical areas of objection and an increase in the percentage of affordable housing, which of course is a key corporate priority, the harm is no longer on balance considered to outweigh the benefits. Importantly here, the scheme remains as before in terms of its impact on the countryside and the landscape. The difference is that in the current case, the benefits such as affordable housing are considered by officers to outweigh the landscape impact. The members are asked to exercise their own judgement in regard to the balance of considerations. A second point to highlight is in relation to countryside policy. Since the previous refusal of permission, the council has received a High Court judgment, the Wenman judgment, that confirms that policy C2 regarding the development in the countryside beyond the Green Belt is a housing supply policy for purposes of paragraph 49 of the NPPF. Now, given that the council cannot identify currently a five-year supply of housing at present, policy C2 must be regarded as having no weight for purposes of constraining housing development in principle. Rather, the council's judgement needs to be in relation to the impact upon the intrinsic character and beauty of the countryside, rather than an objection in principle to development in the countryside as such. Thirdly, members are reminded that as set out in the officers' report, neither the local plan or the Farnham neighbourhood plan are at a sufficiently advanced stage to warrant making arguments in respect of prematurity regarding this application, and this does include any arguments about the desirability of delaying this application until studies regarding the transportation impact are concluded, because such studies form part of the evidence base for the new local plan. So, this application does need to be assessed on its own merits against the 2002 local plan and the NPPF, where those policies are more up to date. And then finally, members, in respect of the special protection areas, the site lies outside of the five-kilometre buffer zone of the Thames Basin Heaths SPA, and in relation to the Wildon Heaths SPA, Natural England's statutory consultee has indicated that there's not likely to be a significant effect on the SPA, and officers are satisfied that this approach is reasonable and meets its duties as competent authority under the habitats regulations 2010. So, I trust that this introduction's been helpful, members. I'm now going to pass over to Louise to take you through the plans and issues in more detail. Thank you very much, chairman.
Thank you. The site is located on the southwestern side of Gardeners Hill Road and comprises an area of 2.54 hectares. The site is currently used for grazing horses. The site is bounded by residential properties to the north. Areas to the east, south and west are more characteristic of open countryside, with sporadic residential properties located in these areas. As you can see from the aerial photograph, the site is relatively undeveloped, with a couple of stables located towards the north of the northern boundary along with the sand school. Cementing is provided in this area, and another stable towards the southern boundary. There are some trees in the centre of the site, located in these two clusters, but other than that, the site is relatively open in character. The site is well screened with thick trees and landscaping, particularly along the eastern, southern and western boundaries of the site. This image shows an extract from the local plan. You can see the green shaded area here, which indicates the countryside beyond the Green Belt. The boundary of the developed area runs along the northern and eastern boundaries of the site. You can also see the proximity of the site to the AOMB, which is 870 metres from the application site. This dotted area is the South Farnham area of special environmental quality, which relates to new housing within this area only, and so is not a consideration for this application. These top two photographs show 16 Gardeners Hill Road, which is adjacent to the northern boundary of the site. The bottom two photos are again taken within the site and are looking towards the rear of properties on Birch Close. These photos show the two existing stables along the northern boundary of the site and the sand school, which is again located to the north. This first photo is taken from the existing site entrance looking north up Gardeners Hill Road, and this one is taken from the site entrance looking south. This photo is taken opposite the site, looking into the existing site access. These top two photos are taken from different positions up Gardeners Hill Road. The site is here, on the left-hand side, as you can see, is well screened by trees. This final photo is of the south of the site and shows the existing barn and existing vehicle entrance. This application is an outline application with access only for consideration. As such, the only matters for consideration are the principle of developing 43 dwellings on the site along with means of access. If planning permission is approved, the matters for future consideration as part of a reserve matters application are the appearance, layout, scale and landscaping. These matters are not for members' consideration this evening. Whilst this is an outline application for access only, an indicative layout has been submitted with the application. This shows how 43 dwellings could be positioned on the site. As you can see on this indicative layout, the proposed buildings are separated from 16 Gardeners Hill Road by 15 metres and from the rear of properties on Birch Close by 43 metres. The proposed housing mix would be six one-bedroom, ten-two-bedroom, thirteen-three-bedroom, eight-four-bedroom and six-five-bedroom houses. Forty per cent of the housing provided would be provided as affordable housing. This indicative landscape plan denotes private open space in the darker green and public open space in the lighter green areas here and here. As you can see, 43 dwellings could be laid out on the site whilst retaining the landscape screening, which currently exists along the boundaries, and with the exception of one tree which is in poor condition and has evidence of internal decay, all the trees would be retained, and the indicative layout plan indicates that the development could be designed around these trees with spaces for communal open space and a local area of play. This plan indicates the proposed access. The existing access is positioned just here to the north of the proposed access, and the proposed access would have a width of 5.5 metres in order to safely accommodate two-way vehicular movements into and out of the site. A visibility display of 2.4 by 51 metres would be provided to the north of the site, and a visibility display of 2.4 by 49 metres would be provided to the south of the site. These are considered sufficient in relation to measured vehicle speeds along this section of road and would comply with manual for streets. There would be a number of highways improvements secured as part of the proposal. A pedestrian strip, which is indicated by this green piece here, would be located on the western side of the highway to give pedestrians and cyclists more space and to make vehicles more aware that there are likely to be pedestrians and cyclists in this area, and would therefore reduce vehicle speeds. At present, there is an existing reduction in speed from 40 to 30 miles per hour at this position here. As part of the proposals, the reduction in speed would be further down to the south of the existing access down here. To the south of the site, there would be a number of features added to the highway to include red hatching and a slow marking on the highway, a welcome to Wrecklesham please drive slowly sign, and a proposed non-raced flat-top hump and associated markings to help control vehicle speeds. Highways improvements, which would include new hatched markings here, would increase visibility at the Long Down Road junction, and new signs would be installed to the north and south of this junction in order to indicate that there is a junction coming up. There will also be highways improvements to the junctions with Boundstone Road and Burnt Hill Road. A non-raced flat-top hump would be introduced to the south of the junction here, and revised road markings would be added to the junction along with a proposed curb build-out and hatched island markings to the corner with Burnt Hill Road here in order to increase visibility at these two junctions. Revised carriageway markings would be painted in the centre of Boundstone Road at the junction, and a revised curb and footway alignment would be installed on the northern side of Boundstone Road here. The existing bus stops on Boundstone Road would be upgraded with new shelters. You can also see here the existing footpath, which currently ends approximately in this position on Boundstone Road, would be extended around the corner and would join up with the pedestrian surfaced area, which would then run down Gardeners Hill Road. Paragraph 32 of the NPPF directs that development should only be prevented or refused on transport grounds where the residual cumulative impacts of the development are severe. The likely generated traffic flows are one every five minutes in each direction, which is unlikely to have a detrimental impact on the operation of the highway network. Surrey County Council have carried out an independent safety audit, which has not identified any fundamental safety problems with the proposed highway works. The mitigation measures would also improve accessibility to the site by non-car modes of travel. The site is located within flood zone one, which is the lowest zone of vulnerability where the government expects development to be directed towards. At present, the site generally falls from north to south towards a watercourse 200 metres south of the site. Surface water from the site is conveyed via two channels which connect to this watercourse and then into the River Way. The proposal will increase the amount of impermeable surface on the site. To mitigate against the risk from localised overland flooding from the proposed development, a sustainable drainage system will be implemented as part of the proposal. This will provide surface water source control, treatment and attenuation in the form of permeable paving and cellular storage systems, which will be connected to the pipework, which will discharge surface water to the channels within the site and the ditch east of the site in Gardeners Hill Road at greenfield runoff rates. The on-site surface water gravity sewer will be designed to cater for the one-in-30 year storm, and the attenuation system will store floodwaters on-site during flood events up to and including the one-in-100-year-plus-30% climate change flood event. Flood flow controls will be used to restrict the rate of flow to the receiving watercourse. Site levels will be manipulated in order to ensure that overland flows during extreme flood events will be diverted away from the buildings. It is considered that this is an appropriate sustainable drainage system, and full details of this would be secured by condition. A maintenance and management plan would also be expected to accompany the full details to ensure that the system would be properly maintained. With regards to foul water drainage, the foul water drainage strategy proposes to convey foul flows through the development via gravity drains to a pumping station which is located here in the south-eastern corner of the site. A connection is then proposed to be made to the existing foul sewer located approximately 100 metres to the north-east side in Gardeners Hill Road here. Thames Water have identified an inability of the existing wastewater infrastructure to accommodate the development. However, they have no overriding objection to the proposal, provided a condition is attached requiring the submission of drainage works. The proposal is located within the SPA five-kilometre buffer zone for the Wildon Heaths SPA. An assessment of the impact of the proposal on both the Thames Basin and the Wildon Heaths SPAs was submitted with the application and assessed by Natural England. Natural England have confirmed that the relatively small increase in recreational pressure would mean there would be no significant impact on the SPAs. Four ecological surveys have been submitted with the application, and subject to conditions securing the recommendations in the ecological appraisal, we are satisfied that the proposal would not impact on protected species. The applicant has agreed to pay infrastructure contributions towards secondary education, transportation improvements, playing pitches and recycling containers totaling £231,363.75. The previous application was refused for five reasons, and I will now outline the differences between that scheme and the current application which we're considering today. The first refusal reason was in relation to the inappropriate housing mix provided. The previous scheme provides a higher quantity of larger units and fewer smaller units. The current scheme provides more smaller units and fewer of the largest units, which is more representative of housing need within Waverley. It is therefore considered that this refusal reason has been overcome. The second refusal reason related to the failure of the applicants to enter into an appropriate legal agreement to secure the highways improvement works, which would mitigate the traffic impact and improve accessibility to the site. The applicants have agreed to provide the highway improvements set out earlier in the presentation and are currently working with our legal team to secure this via a legal agreement. It is considered that the signing of this agreement will overcome this refusal reason. The third refusal reason related to the failure of the applicants to enter into a legal agreement to provide infrastructure contributions. The applicant has agreed to pay the financial contributions as set out earlier, and again are working with the legal team to secure a legal agreement, and signing this will overcome this refusal reason. The fourth refusal reason related to the impact of the proposal on protected species, and this was specifically in relation to the potential impact of bats which could be nesting in the tree which was proposed to be removed. A tree climbing inspection has been submitted with this application, demonstrating that there is no evidence of bats within that tree. As such, this refusal reason is considered to have been overcome. The final refusal reason related to the impact of the proposal on the landscape character of the area. The site is located within the open countryside, and the only development and buildings within this are for use for the grazing of horses. The proposal would have an urbanising effect on the site, and would impact on the landscape character of the area, as it would replace greenfields with housing and hard standing, car parking and formal boundary treatments. It is not considered that the changes to this proposal would overcome the impact of the proposal on the landscape character of the area, and this issue still remains. However, the test is whether any adverse impacts of doing so would significantly and demonstrably outweigh the benefits of the proposal. It is officers' opinion that the adverse impacts of the proposal on the landscape character of the area would no longer outweigh the benefits. The benefits of the scheme include the supply of 43 houses. This is particularly relevant considering the council cannot meet a five-year supply of housing. The provision of 40% affordable housing that would contribute towards the council's affordable housing need. Also of consideration is that whilst there would be an impact on the landscape character, the site is not located within the AOMB or the AGLV, and as such, the impact on the landscape is not afforded the highest level of protection. Furthermore, the adverse impacts associated with the other refusal reasons are no longer relevant, and these have been overcome. Please can I draw members' attention to the update sheet, which outlines an additional infrastructure contribution and an amended concluding paragraph. It also notes that the council's flood risk consultant has confirmed that the flood risk assessment complies with the NPPF, and outlines additional representations received. The determining issues in relation to this application, in relation to matters of principle and technical opinion, are prematurity, environmental impact assessment, the lawful use of the land and the loss of agriculture, housing land supply, highways including the impact on traffic and parking, air quality, flooding and drainage, archaeology, infrastructure, biodiversity and compliance with the habitat regulations, the effect on the SPA and the cumulative effects of other developments. The matters of judgement are the location of the development, the housing mix and density, affordable housing, the impact on the countryside and the landscape, the impact on visual amenity and trees, the impact on residential amenity and the provision of amenity and place space. The recommendation is for approval, subject to the applicant entering into a legal agreement to secure 40% affordable housing and financial contributions towards secondary education, playing pitches, recycling containers, highways improvements, the setting up of a management company for the management of the open space and the LAP, and the setting up of a management company for the maintenance of the SADS. A highways 278 agreement with the county highway authority to secure the creation of a gateway feature, revisions to the road marking regime including a coloured surface strip to manage vehicle speeds and give pedestrians and cyclists more space, improvements to the junction of Gardeners Hill Road with Boundstone Road and Sandrock Hill Road, improvements to the junction of Gardeners Hill Road and Long Down Road, and updated bus stop infrastructure to closest bus stops on Boundstone Road, and conditions 1 to 20 and informatives 1 to 16 as noted in the agenda report. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Louise. Very thorough presentation. I heard a tinkle of phones just now. Could all other members please switch off or switch their phones to silent, and of course, members of the public as well, please, so we're not disturbed. We now have three public speakers. We have five minutes each speaker, and you will get a warning amber signal at four and a half minutes before you allow your time to wind up. So, can I invite the first speaker to come forward, Mr Richard Walker?
Do I have to, or can I stand? Is that all right? Okay, thank you. These Baker Oats fields are no ordinary fields, they're extraordinarily precious. They're uniquely valuable, not purely in financial terms for the developer, but in terms of sustainability, the environment, and because they lead to an area of outstanding natural beauty, Frenchham Ponds. Above all, Baker Oats fields are valuable because they are the only green lung, not a green lung, the only green lung left between Farnham and Frenchham. And now, by virtue of the fact that we're here, even this last green lung is threatened by unnecessary urbanisation with houses that are completely out of character with the rural area. Of course, Farnham needs housing, of course, Farnham needs affordable housing with good amenities close by, shops, schools and surgeries, with good road and pedestrian access, but this location is two and a half miles from the centre of Farnham. It's in the middle of the countryside with no amenities, absolutely none. In planning terms, I believe that's called unsustainable. The NPPF says that developers should avoid isolated new homes in the countryside. It urges no urban sprawl. It lays importance on safeguarded land such as these fields, this last green lung. These are serious NPPF reasons why you should refuse Baker Oats planning permission. But there are more reasons. Access to this proposed development, Gardeners Hill Road, is a country lane undulating with sharp bends, dangerously narrow and with extremely poor driver sightlines. At its narrowest, the road is about 14 feet wide. Even two minis passing each other would have literally inches to spare. Yet, the developer proposes to reduce the road further with a three-foot wide coloured strip for pedestrians to walk along, and this at a notoriously difficult junction with the road. We commissioned a safety audit by a top firm of professional highway engineers, RGP transport planning and infrastructure design consultants, and they concluded, and I quote from their report, of which you have a copy, "The proposal and highway mitigation works are significantly out of character and ill-conceived, resulting in safety concerns." I know that your transport development control officers came to the opposite conclusion, only I don't doubt their professionalism. But I do wonder how many of them, or us, or indeed you, since your site visit, would recommend that your nearest and dearest, your children, should take a stroll along that coloured pedestrian strip, along that shared road space, along that astonishingly narrow road with extremely poor driver sightlines? I do wonder, because that is the proposed route for schoolchildren to walk towards the developer's vision of a new bus stop. Surely, health and safety reasons alone say you should refuse Baker Oats planning permission. What's concerning, though, is this despoiling of the rural countryside, the landscape, this proposed development is completely unnecessary. As councillor Munro and other councillors have said, the Baker Oats proposed development is in the wrong place. The developer's assertion that there are no alternatives is untrue. The Schla of April 2014 shows eight green sites yielding more than 1,000 new properties, and they don't include the numerous brownfield sites around Farnham. But the huge difference between the proposed amber Baker Oats application and the proposed green sites is accessibility. All the green locations have good road access, have pavements, are sustainable, have good access to amenities. Essentially, they're all in sensible places, in sharp contrast to Baker Oats, which is miles from any amenity. More reasons why you should refuse Baker Oats planning permission. It is obvious that building on Baker Oats fields is shockingly unnecessary. It is in the wrong place. It is out of character. It flouts NPPF guidelines in every respect. It is unsustainable- It is unsustainable in terms of location. And with respect to proposed road access, it is clearly unsafe as recognised by councillors, local residents, everyone and highlighted by our MP Jeremy Hunt. Reason enough that you must refuse Baker Oats planning permission. We appeal to you to refuse Baker Oats planning permission. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you very much, Mr Walker. Very well timed. We now have the Farnham Town Council representative, John Ward. I believe you understand the rules, John.
And I shall sit. Thank you, Mr Chairman. Good evening, councillors. For those who don't know me, my name is John Ward and I am the Farnham Town Councillor for the Short Heath and Boundstone Ward which directly abuts this development and includes parts of Gardners Hill Road, the main access of which you will hear more later. As you can imagine, I have been besieged by residents objecting to this development which has been so lucidly put by the previous speaker. However, I'm not here as the ward councillor, I'm here as the leader of Farnham Town Council to put forward the council's objections. This proposal seeks to extend the urban boundary by tacking this development onto the well-defined edge of the settlement. The Farnham design statement which has been out to consultation, sorry, the Farnham design statement which is a significant consideration in your planning portfolio quotes this as a prominent, a prominent greenfield site within the countryside which should be protected for its own sake. Only as a last resort should these countryside greenfield developments be considered, especially when there are also brownfield sites which are available, many of which are listed in the draft neighbourhood plan from Farnham which has been out to consultation. Access is very definitely a very considerable thing to consider at the moment. I understand that it is proposed to paint some colours on this road which apparently will increase pedestrian safety. Coloured lines, councillors, I'm sure you would agree, will not make the road any wider. They will not remove the blind spots on the road and they will not improve the already impaired visibility. I'm delighted to see that a bus stop is going to be provided, but when there are very few buses, I think this is of limited use and frankly does not make this a sustainable location. I understand that the highways authority is no longer objecting to this development. However, in my time at the council, I have sat up on that dais for six years chairing planning committees and one consistent feature has been a somewhat sense of awe and wonder and disagreement with some of the highways agency's opinions. I believe many of you have been on a site visit down this road and had to take to the verges when cars have come past. You're qualified drivers and I'm sure you can make your own assessments. But imagine groups of schoolchildren chatting, wandering down that road, fast traffic coming, particularly on a frosty day, when water from the number of springs, which don't appear to be mentioned in the papers you have before you, freezes and turns it into an ice rink for cars. Whilst I'm sure you realise and will be emphasised the highways authority is the statutory authority, you are not obliged to accept its findings and you should consider them on its merits. I hope you will consider what's going to happen to children in this very, very narrow, frosty road during night time. Reviewing the new update sheet, I read here, "It is considered that the adverse impact on the character of the countryside beyond the green belt would not significantly and demonstrably outweigh the benefits proposed in this scheme." I'm sure councillors, you will all have read it, but let me remind you of the previous decision to reject this. "The proposal by virtue of the number of dwellings, scale, urbanising effect and harm to the landscape character would cause material and detrimental harm to the character and setting of the existing settlement and the intrinsic character, beauty and openness of the countryside, contrary to a number of policies of the Waverley Balla Council Local Plan and paragraphs of the NPPF. The adverse impact would significantly and demonstratively outweigh the benefits of the proposal." As has been said earlier, councillors, it is up to you to balance these judgements. But I would put to you, "The countryside hasn't changed, the narrow road hasn't changed, the unsustainability and location of this development hasn't changed and I would urge you to reject it."
Thank you very much, John Ward. And we now have the agent Asher Ross.
Thank you, Mr Chairman, members of the planning committee. My name is Asher Ross and I'm director of Boyer Planning, the agents for this application. I represent the applicant Focus Homes, a family-owned local business who pride themselves on attention to detail and have been providing distinctive range of traditionally built homes in Surrey, Hampshire and West Sussex for thirty years. The officer report before you is comprehensive. However, I want to highlight some key issues that you have to grapple with when considering this application. The key test that you have to come to a view on is whether the adverse impacts from granting consent for this development significantly and demonstrably outweigh the benefits. There is no doubt that the development would have significant benefits such as additional housing of which forty per cent would be affordable, highway improvements, ecological improvements, et cetera. However, you need to be clear that there is significant and demonstrable harm. There is only one area that we do not agree with the officer's assessment and this relates to the scoring of the site as carried out in the Schla. The officer notes that the site scored amber and therefore is not a priority for site for housing at this stage. However, the reason for this rating was due to potential impact on the special protection area and as you will note and the officer report acknowledges, the development of this site would not affect the SPA. Therefore, you must consider that the correct conclusion is that the assessment of this site should be green. Let me be absolutely clear, members. The site is not in the green belt, the site is not in the area of outstanding natural beauty, the site is not in the area of great landscape value, the site has the lowest risk of flooding, the site does not have high quality agricultural land, the site is adjacent to the settlement boundary, there is no harm to any national designations. It is clear that there is an identified need for housing both in the borough and the neighbourhood forum and have accepted the need for some of the housing to be developed on greenfield sites. Housing needs to go somewhere and a location such as this where there is evidence that there would be no harm is a suitable site. You may be aware, and it's obviously set out already, that the procedural application was refused under delegated powers earlier this year and we would state that all those reasons for refusal have already been overcome. It's clear from the officer's report, the application has been subject to comprehensive consideration by officers, the county council, statutory bodies and local stakeholders. Throughout this process, various amendments and additional information has been submitted and that has led to no objections being raised by any statutory consultees. Turning to the main issues that the objectors appear to raise and this is highways and infrastructure provision. Just to be absolutely clear, Surrey County Council have confirmed that the proposals are considered to be acceptable in terms of highway safety, capacity and policy considerations and will not cause severe residual cumulative impact on transport proposals. You have already heard as to what improvements are going to happen in terms of Goddard Hill Road, Boundstone Road and Surrey have advised that these go beyond what is required to mitigate the development and are considered to be benefits of the proposal. Indeed, as part of their assessment, they considered the work submitted by the objectors to the site and Surrey's conclusion is, and I quote, "Following consideration of the report by RGP Transport Planning and Design, the highway authority is satisfied that the proposal would have an acceptable impact on the safety and efficiency of the surrounding highway network." In terms of infrastructure, I would say the site is location is sustainable location with an ability to utilise a choice of means of transport. The applicant will be entering into a section one oh six agreement which will provide substantial contributions totalling over two hundred and thirty thousand pounds, including highway safety and accessibility improvements, bus stop improvements and further infrastructure improvements. To conclude, members, the proposed development would provide new homes in a sustainable location, would deliver enhancements to the local area that would benefit both the existing and future populations. We would request that you support your officer's recommendation and grant consent for this development. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Can I now call on councillor Wyatt Ramsdale who has asked to speak, he's not a member of this committee but he is a local member?
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Good evening, everyone. As just indicated, this site actually sits in the very corner of my ward and is an important aspect to me. Let me be clear, Waverley needs houses. But this application is the wrong scheme in the wrong place and I've got three very clear reasons in my mind for making that statement. First, the road junctions near to this site are dangerous. The nature and type of housing proposed will have lots of families of low or modest income and thus many of them will be relying on public transport or as pedestrians to leave and enter the site. Okay, we've heard some improvements can be made, but they will not make those junctions safe. Painted lines on the road do not make it a safe place when we know this road is used as a cut through between adjacent A roads. There isn't a history of accidents of pedestrians up at these junctions at the moment. Why? Because there isn't a large mass of people who rely as pedestrians walking up Gardners Hill Road to get to the bus stops. Two, as the report indicates, it's adjacent to some built-up areas of large houses, but it's not adjacent to the local services. The shops, the pubs and the schools are all several miles away. That's a car journey. And if you did try and walk, there's hardly any footpath to walk along. Three, these green open fields, and you saw the pictures of them, are a green lung of Farnham. Policy C two rightly excludes its development. The Farnham Neighbourhood Plan, a document of relevance given its near-finished date, does not identify this site as appropriate to develop on. Our own Schla identifies it as an amber site, not a green site. There are enough sites, many of them brownfield in Farnham, identified as green, which can meet Farnham's shared of the so-called four hundred and seventy or five hundred and twelve per annum of need. The bigger picture of the green lung needs to be respected. If there are enough sites, which there are, in the area, then C two isn't out of date or we should see that the principle of retaining greenfield sites should be applied to this site. So to conclude, colleagues, there is a five-year availability of sites around Farnham without using this green lung which is in the countryside, without using a site that's miles away from the shops, pubs and schools and is on a location that will be dangerous for the pedestrians. We talked about a significant and demonstrable risk. What does it need? A poor child going to school to get knocked over? It's a judgement you all have to make about the relative benefits or the disadvantages of this site. I wish you good luck with your conclusions. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you very much. Now open to members for expressing their concerns and feelings. Councillor Holder.
Thank you, Chairman. Myself and other members of this committee visited the site on Friday and we walked from the entrance to the access to the site up to Poundstone Road along Gardners Hill Road. We walked in single file and I have to say that during that time, there were, I suppose, about twenty cars that had to stop in order to allow us to progress up the hill. The actual width of the road, as Mr Walker has explained, after you take into consideration the pedestrian strip, is some ten feet, which allows just one car to progress. We saw, although I believe in the instructions here it's one car every five minutes, we saw one car every two minutes. It was almost a constant stream of traffic. It would be impossible during commuting times for any children to walk safely from the access site up to Boundstone Road without being hit by a car. Nobody is going to take any notice of a green painted strip along the side of the road. It is totally irrelevant. I therefore feel that this is an inaccessible and unfielded site in an unworkable area and I will object to the application.
Thank you very much. Councillor Frost.
Thank you very much indeed, Chairman. Well, this is also my ward and when the officer started to introduce this item, she made the mistake, I think, of mentioning two dreaded words and those words were "on balance". That means in my mind that the officers are not confident that this is the direction we should go in. They reckon that on balance, because we need the houses, this is the way we'll go. But this is an entirely inappropriate site here. We do need houses, we all know that. We spend our lives actually saying we've got to build houses, but it's got to be in the right location and this is not the right location. Yes, TDC have agreed, some money's under two seven eight, but let me tell you, looking at that picture up there, that plan of all the things they're going to do to make the highway safer, they're only giving us twenty-five thousand pounds. Now, I know something about the costs of highway works and twenty-five thousand pounds is not going to get you one strip of coloured tarmac. Therefore, we really have got to look at this in a much more logical way. I spend my life trying to get rid of clutter and road signs and clutter that we have got about this place, but look at what we're going to have. We are taking a very rural, pretty part of our ward and we are turning it into an urban clearway. Those children leaving that site, and there will be a number of them, will find it difficult to walk down that road, particularly if they are going to make, in quotes, "a cycle track" to allow people to walk in it and cycle along it. There just is not the room. I'm sure that when we get the detailed plans of this development, it will be lovely, but not here. And I'm sorry, I cannot support this location for this particular site. And it was very interesting looking at the indicative layout plan and looking at the proposed internal road structure and it seemed to me that some of these internal roads ended where they could be opened up later for more housing. So as far as I'm concerned, this is in the wrong place. Waverley haven't identified it as a green site, it's only amber and we should stick with that. We need a lot better, I mean, Long Down Road, I use these roads every day, several times a day and Long Down Road, when you come out of that road, you take your life in your hands and no amount of green tarmac, red tarmac, purple tarmac will make it any different. And just a point for the officers, it's not Burnt Hill Road there, it's Burnt Hill Way. So I'm sorry, officers, as far as I'm concerned, it's, the need is there, but it is in the wrong place for the people I represent. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councillor Goodrich.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I found the site visit very instructive. It is quite clear that so far as the access to the site is concerned, where the site is being proposed is the best place. But that doesn't necessarily mean... is being proposed is the best place, but that doesn't necessarily mean it's acceptable. I'm very disappointed that the highways are not here, the Surrey County Council. Quite often at joint planning, they are here, particularly when highways issues are likely to arise, and I'm disappointed, therefore I'm not able to seek the opinion of the highway authority. I too, as other speakers, realise that for twenty-five thousand, you only get a few pots of paint, and they're going to be green and red, I think, large wholesale pots of paint, but I cannot see how that is going to make the situation any safer. As has been mentioned, the site visit was a very hairy exercise when we were walking up and down the road, and we were all having to shout to each other, cars coming, and to look out for them. I have a grandchild in Farnham, not very close to this site, but I wouldn't recommend to any family member of mine to live on this site and to expect to use the bus stop. If a pavement was being put in all the way from the bus stop to the site with a raised pavement and so on, I would be happier, but then, of course, the highway would be so narrow that nothing could pass. I'm aware that this road is used as a, I don't say a rat run, but it's certainly a shortcut from Frenchham to Farnham, in that I have used it on more than one occasion for that purpose. It says on page thirty-two of the report, the second paragraph, that the site is located in close proximity to a bus stop. Well, it's uphill and it's, I wouldn't describe it as close proximity, and then the report goes on to say that the pedestrian cycle access routes proposed would provide sustainable access links to the bus stop. Well, as has already been said, I don't consider those painting of the road to be good enough. The fact that we've got some affordable housing on the site is a good thing, we want affordable housing, but the likelihood is that those who live in affordable houses are less likely to have a car, and therefore more likely to use other forms of transport. And in my view, the... this is not a sustainable location. It says in the report, officers consider that the proposal would be located in a relatively sustainable location. So relatively does seem to me to water down the sustainability quite a bit, and that's one of the balances, no doubt, that we are to take into account. And if one looks further on in the report, the same problems arise, saying on page forty, fourth paragraph, that the highway improvement works are proposed to enhance Gardners Hill Road as a walking route. I'm afraid as a matter of judgement, I don't agree with that, and I think the green coloured surface strip, helping management of vehicle speeds as giving pedestrians and cyclists more space. Well, you don't get more space by painting the Carriageway if the motorists... it will be motorists that can't pass safely in any event. I also don't understand why one of the carrots we're being given is improving the bus shelter, or rather putting up a bus shelter. There is a bus stop there already, and to have a bus information digitally to tell you that the next bus is in two hours' time, I can't really see it's a great advantage. I have no idea how often the bus goes down there, so I don't want to malign the bus company, but it doesn't improve the number of buses, it just ensures that while you're waiting, you can keep dry. And there's no pavement, so far as I'm aware, along Burnt Common Road or whatever the road is, where the bus is. There's a small section of pavement where the bus stop is, and that's the only bit of pavement around. So I am, at this stage, very concerned about the highway safety situation, and one weighs it up with the original permission refusal on page twenty-seven, paragraph one, and then you look at the highway safety as well. On the balance, I am at the moment not happy with it, but I'm very happy to listen to other members' views.
Thank you very much. Matthew Evans, do you wish to come in at this point, or would you want to hold your... oh, sorry, it's Louise, I didn't realise, I'm sorry.
Just for clarification, the highways improvements are all separate to the twenty-five thousand pounds financial contribution. All of these improvements shown on this plan, which is up on your screen now, will be achieved via a section two seven eight highways agreement with Surrey County Council.
Thank you very much. Councillor Coburn.
Thank you. I'll try not to repeat points, but I'm afraid most of my concerns are similar to the concerns that have already been expressed by many other people. In fact, I have to confess that when I read this report, I was completely baffled, because time after time, you seem to be giving me evidence of the urbanising effect of this application, and then right at the end, saying it was acceptable. I know Gardners Hill Road, like the back of my hand, it's pillie-bendy, it's got no pavements or lighting, it's typical of many of the roads around Rowledge, Frenchham and the Bourne, and we love them to bits because they're like that. We don't want them urbanised, we never have. Time after... sorry, it's... I used to go use this road to go to school when I was teaching, and as I think it was Councillor Frost said, it's very narrow in places, covered by trees, refted by springs, and these springs freeze. And even if these springs don't freeze, you don't get up Gardners Hill Road in a severe frost. It is a highly dangerous road, and the thought of anybody walking along it... in fact, I was going to ask you why, but why it's stolen it, if anybody would like to guess why there've been no incidents involving pedestrians on Gardners Hill Road. And it's quite simple, nobody's mad enough to walk up it, you know, I mean, it's... nobody would walk up that road, you just wouldn't do it at all, it is far too dangerous. They... I must say, when I read about the green paint, Harry Potter came to mind. I thought, this is marvellous, you know, I could paint it along, I can widen every road in Farnham, you know, green strip, road widened, it solves so many problems. It's madness, I'm sorry, it is absolute madness to consider putting children walking up that road because they've got a bit of green paint up one side of it. The proposed improvements to the two junctions, you mentioned Long Down Road, it's blind. It's a blind corner because there's a big brick building on the edge of it. You can't move the building, it's there, and in order to turn out of Long Down Road, you have to come right out. We do it very, very slowly, and it just about works because everyone knows how dangerous it is. But you cannot, no amount of artwork round that junction's going to improve that, it's a building, a brick building. The other dangerous junction is the one at the top of Gardners Hill Road, where Poundstone Road does that sweeping round, Burnt Hill Way comes in from the right, and what you can't see on there is that the road that goes into the town goes downhill. Sightlines are not good at any point there. We crossed there on the site visit, and I wouldn't say we did it with any grace, we scurried across as soon as we vaguely thought we had half a chance. In fact, like Councillor Holder, I don't remember how many times we actually leapt onto the verge to avoid being hit by cars while we were doing our walk. It is not a place that you would willingly put any child, and as Councillor Goodrich said, no parent or grandparent could possibly agree that proposed access and movement strategy would enable all highway users to travel from the site with safety inconvenience. I'm sorry, you take your life in your hands if you walk up there too often. There was talk of increased planting along the boundary, but when we walked down the hill, I think it's slightly misleading, some of the shots of Gardners Hill Road, because just as you come out of the site, there's a sharp bend round to the right, it's sharper than that when you're there, and the officer said, you know, they were going to have to cut back some of the vegetation to make that slightly safer, you know. Why bother? Why not just leave it, for goodness sake? Look at it, it's lovely. So I'm going back to something that some of the speakers have said, the current nature of both this site and Gardners Hill Road, and you can see it up there, is one of open space, trees and very few buildings. In the report, the officer states quite clearly that it's currently open fields and that they will be replaced by a substantial built form. How on earth does this fit in with the applicant's assertion that the development will take on the character of its neighbouring settlements? It's going to be nothing like its neighbouring settlements. If you look at the statements on pages thirty-two, thirty-three and thirty-four of the report, I got my highlighter out to see which ones surprised me most, and quite frankly, the whole page turned pink. It states there quite clearly, local planning authorities should create a shared vision with communities of the residential environment and facilities they wish to see. We've done this, we've consulted our residents, you've had four hundred plus writing into you. This site has been rejected by Farnham residents. Work with Farnham residents on this to get the sites that are acceptable, both to the local area but also to the town as a whole. Everyone has said it doesn't provide good accessibility to a town or local centre, the officer in the report says that. The site does not provide good accessibility to a town or local centre, schools or a railway station. That's rather important, I would have thought, if you're talking about sustainability. We've already covered the bus stop, my... Councillor Goodrich has done that more than adequately. This site is not considered to be a priority for the delivery of homes, it's stated in the report. It's amber, it's not a priority. There are other sites, people have mentioned that. But what it does do, and again, it's written in the report, the site provides a key area of transition between the built-up developed area to the north and the open fields and woodland to the south. I think one of the public speakers mentioned that, this is the lung, as you like, that goes down to the A O M B and the villages of Frenchham, and then round the corner you come into Rowledge. The introduction of the level of residential development proposed would therefore have a negative impact on the character of the intrinsic beauty of the countryside by virtue of its urbanising effect. And I'm quoting that from the report, I'm not just saying what I feel. There's a huge amount wrong, I know we're supposed to be looking at access, but we keep being, I think, slightly bullied with this affordable housing thing. You know, we are supposed to be looking at access, but when you look at access, you have to think about the cars and the parking, and when you look at the proposal, it is so out of keeping with anything in the area. We just do not have anything that looks anything like that in the area. I agree with Councillor Goodrich, if the affordable homes is going to be on that far side of the site, and the poor souls have got to get the pushchair out, walk all the way there and then take their life in their hands with the cars, it is just nonsense, it cannot be considered sustainable by any definition. I'm sorry, I just, I'm bewildered, I think, really, by the statements in the report and the conclusion that the officer has come to. So just to sum up, and I'm sorry if I have repeated, the applicant, yes, has made some changes, but as far as I can see, they do little, if anything at all, to minimise the urbanising effect of this proposal. I think the previous reason for refusal should stand, and having leapt into nettles, rather sadly, when I was trying to avoid oncoming cars, fortunately I found some docked leaves near the Long Down Road junction, but, you know, it was so dangerous, we were leaping left and right, we didn't have time to see whether there were nettles there. I cannot support the highways authority's views that this will ever be a safe road for pedestrians. You can paint it red, white and blue, you can hang bells up, but it will never, ever be a safe road for pedestrians. The only way residents will access this site is by car, it's not a sustainable site, if sustainability should try and diminish the use of the car, and quite frankly, I agree with other people, this is not a site for priority, it is not a site that should be developed at this stage.
Thank you very much. I take it from that you're not in agreement with the officer's recommendation? Councillor Storey, I'm sorry, Mr McLeod, I've already had, I've got your name down, but I missed Councillor Storey, or I'm sure he's going to come back with an opposite view on this.
I think you're misguided, if you think that. I'm sorry, I missed my turn because I think I've got the same highlighter as Councillor Coburn, because I seem to have got the same pieces of script marked as she has just mentioned. I won't go through them all again, although I agree wholeheartedly with what Mr Walker and Councillor Ward said from the public benches, and much of what has been said from these benches. The only point which I would bring forward, which hasn't already been mentioned, is the density of this particular development. Somebody said that it will soon fit in with the neighbouring areas, well, not at a density of twenty-three point four-two, which is more than double the surrounding areas. You've only got to look at that plan above your head to see the difference in the amount of space around the houses that there are that have been birched close and within this development. And this isn't a planning issue, but I have had a letter, which I presume everybody has had, from the developer's agent, and I have to say, I was incensed by the tone of that letter. It's aggressive, and it's trying to teach me to suck eggs, it's telling me what I'm supposed to be doing, which I resent wholeheartedly. I will be voting against this development, but not for that reason.
Thank you very much. Yes, and I forgot to mention, I'd received a letter, and I contacted the people who wrote the letter to ask whether it had been forwarded to officers, I don't know whether you did receive the letter, but either way, yes, it was a little aggressive, I have to agree. Mr McLeod, I'm sorry I've kept you so long.
Thank you, Chairman. I can help, Councillor Goodrich, in one small point, at the site visit, I did wander over and look at the bus stop, and there's four services shown, all in the morning, of which one is school days only, so that's the level of the bus service. My abiding memory of the site visit was actually Matthew Evans trying to protect the safety of councillors as to what's happened down this road. He was very seriously concerned about our safety, actually, in that you could only tell cars were coming by looking out for the engine noise, and councillors were wandering all over the road, very much as people say in these situations, it was like herding cats, actually. So I very much agree with what councillors have said about this safety aspect. The most important statement to me in this whole report is in page thirty-nine, where it talks about near the bottom, safe and suitable access to the site can be achieved for all people, all people. That's a prerequisite, it seems to me, and it seems to me that it's absolutely necessary, it'd be a prerequisite, that a proper pavement would be provided here. If you take forty-three dwellings being developed, as I understand it, in Waverley in general and in Farnham, that will typically produce about a hundred and ten residents, you get an average of about two and a half residents to each house, and I've advised this on Andrew Carter, who's the headmaster of the school immediately opposite to where I live, that typically twenty per cent of the population is school-aged children, so we're talking about something like twenty-two children here, and it could be many more, because many people moved to Farnham, that's only half a child per dwelling, if you like, but many people moved to Farnham because of the very good schools. So it's going to be at least twenty-two children, probably many more, and Mr Ross gave some very good points why there should be development here from the point of view of the developer, but he did say that we have to be convinced that the adverse impact significantly overweighs the benefits, and that one impact, the safety of these children, seems to me to overweigh anything else. I couldn't be convinced to vote for this application unless there was a proper pavement. I know that we're told that Surrey highways are the experts, but having visited the site, I'm totally convinced that it would be a very big safety problem. I've been advised by councillor Middalies, who's sitting behind me, one of the other local councillors, that in winter... local councillors, that in winter, this actual road is almost impassable, particularly when it's icy or snowy. And there's, I believe, two incidents in last year, last winter, of cars overturning on this road. And if that was to happen, when the children walking up and down this green strip, you know, it just seemed like potentially an accident, a very bad accident waiting to happen. So, to me, this outweighs all other considerations, and the reason why I couldn't possibly support this application.
Thank you, thank you very much. Councillor Stenit, and perhaps we can, we've had a lot of very strong and firm information or reasons why we don't approve. It would be nice to hear something new or very short speeches, but I'm not aiming that at you, Mr Stenit.
Thank you, chairman. I visited the site today, and I thought it was a nice site, I thought it would be a nice place for affordable homes. But I have to say that I think Surrey County Council highways leave our offices high and dry. We're under great pressure to produce houses, and with the best will in the world, they do a good job, and they look at the situation we've got. But if the highways don't object to what I, when I looked at that road today, I thought was sheer madness, anyone walking down there, and I've got my common sense hat on now, any child going down there, it would be absolute looney, because if two cars came too fast or whatever, someone's going to get killed or hurt, or whatever the case may be. So, I don't know whether we can say anything, or whether we can get a representative when we have these joint planning committee meetings about the highways, because we had exactly the same thing in Cranley, Amlets Lane. We're now faced with the highways officer saying, he just looked at the length of Amlets Lane, never took on the exit and outlets of where that traffic goes, and we've now got exactly the situation in Cranley, with a hundred and twenty-five homes, outline planning permission approved, in a totally unacceptable and dangerous position. And whilst our officers are under great pressure to produce these sites, and then when it goes to appeal, the inspector, if they haven't explored every avenue of reasons to refuse it, then they get hammered for that. And I think that the highways are going to make this decision, that it's perfectly safe, they should be here to take the criticism, and their studies should be a lot better. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councillor Adams.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I'm not going to say much about the traffic, because everybody else has. But I would say that the fact that the entrance to the site is wider than the road to allow two vehicles to pass, I would have thought spoke volumes. What I am going to say, though, is, in the initial reasons for refusal, the first one, which was the proposal by virtue of the number of dwelling scale urbanising impact harmed the landscape character would cause material detrimental harm to the character and setting of the existing settlement, et cetera, I don't see has been answered at all. I'm most unimpressed by the fact that, having refused a application for forty-three dwellings, the developer has come back with exactly the same number. I think that is actually being a bit cheeky. Now, as far as the actual site is concerned, yes, it is excellent site, it is part of the strategic gap, if you like to call it that, between the bottom of Rowledge and Frenchham. This site occupies nearly fifty per cent of that strategic gap. It takes us very close to the boundary of the A M B, it takes us very close to Frenchham. And quite frankly, I don't see that the objection, or the reason for rejection, Part One in the previous application has in any way been superseded. So, I would not support this on the same, for the same reason that we didn't support it before.
Thank you very much. Are there any further speakers? Should we now go to the recommendation? I'm sorry, councillor Malina.
Thank you, chairman, I shall be brief. Councillor Adams has said much of what I would have said. I think the balancing decision we are supposed to take, unless officers correct me, is to see if we think the harm significantly outweighs the benefits. And my approach to this is, the benefits are not actually quite as large as one might presume. There is a case which the officers were good enough to bring to my attention, St Albans against Hunston, and it's well worth a read, because it goes into paragraph forty-seven and how it should be applied in considerable detail. And one of the key things which was said, and if the colleagues will forgive me reading a brief part, is that when there is a five-year shortfall, that is not simply a recommendation to build. What he did, what the Lord Justice Mackay said, having said the inspector he was reviewing was wrong, he said, however, that is not the end of the matter. The crucial question is for an inspector in such a case is not, is there a shortfall in housing land supply? It is how very special circumstances have been demonstrated to outweigh the Green Belt objection. This is, of course, a Green Belt case, but the point he makes is of more general application. As counsel for the defendant said, recognised in the course of the hearing, such circumstances are not automatically demonstrated, simply because there is a less than five-year supply of housing land. He goes on to say, and there are other factors as well. One of those is the planning context in which that shortfall is to be seen. The context may be that the district in question is subject to a considerable scale to policies protecting much or most of the undeveloped land from development, except in exceptional or very special circumstances, whether because such land is an area of outstanding natural beauty, national park, or Green Belt. If that is the case, then it may be wholly unsurprising that there is not a five-year supply of housing land, when measured simply against the unvarnished figures of household projections. A decision-maker would then be entitled to conclude, if such were the planning judgment, that some degree of shortfall in housing land supply, as measured simply by household formation rates, was inevitable. That may well affect the weight to be attached to the shortfall. I'll end there, but I recommend the full judgment to everyone who's interested. But for St Albans, I think you can read Waverley with remarkable accuracy, we have just the same problems. And I think, therefore, that while we do need housing, we should not feel obliged to develop unsuitable sites. And I will say no more than to say that I felt that the first reason, the leading reason given in October for refusing, was entirely persuasive, and I've heard absolutely nothing to suggest that the other factors, which were far less potent reasons, in my view, the fact they've been cured does not actually alter the balance. And in my opinion, anyway, there is still a significant outweighing by the harm of the benefits, and I too feel unable to support the officers.
Thank you very much. Councillor Ellis.
Thank you, chairman. I won't reiterate what everybody else has already said. I'm just looking at page twenty-eight and twenty-nine, and the differences between this current proposal and that previously refused. A provision of additional affordable housing, thirty-two and a half per cent to forty per cent, there's a general view, I think, amongst this committee, affordable housing brings with it more children, but rather less by way of cars. So, most of those children will need to walk to school or wherever else they are going. And I do not think, really, that the provision of additional affordable housing, an improved housing mix, an additional ecology study, and all those other reasons, or rather, differences between this proposal and the previous one, are any reason at all to risk even one child's life. And I'm sorry, but I cannot support this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Does that conclude? Oh, I'm sorry, yes. Councillor Goodrich.
Chairman, a totally different point, and it may be totally academic, but I think it will be. I think it's a condition, it's suggested by the developer, that if this permission is granted, they will not carry out the erection of the mast. I can't see any condition, because they've got planning permission for a telecom mast on this site, I don't see a condition down that that application or that permission would not be carried out. So, I'm just asking whether or not we should have a condition put in, and if I've missed it, I apologise. I bet I couldn't see any condition there that says, if this is granted, there'll be no mast.
Thank you for that. I actually did discuss that with Louise this afternoon, and she agreed that we would put a condition in. I don't know whether we wish to word that now, or whether we bring that back later if the application is supported. So, without further ado, I think, can we have a show of hands for those people who wish to support the application's recommendation, which is a revised recommendation, which is on the back of your update sheet? Can those in favour please show a hand? Now, don't all wave at once, please. So, can I have those who would wish to refusal?
Those against the recommendation.
So, those against the recommendation.
That is unanimous.
Put me down as abstaining. Refuse, can I have an alternate proposal? Councillor Ellis.
Thank you, chairman. I would recommend that the committee refuses this application for the same reasons that the previous application was refused as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I have a second for that. Councillor Coburn?
No.
Councillor Goodrich.
I'm not quite sure we can just take out the same ones. It would certainly be the same reason, number one. But when you start looking at things like they haven't entered into an appropriate legal agreement, which is being offered, failure to comply with our infrastructure contribution, which they've offered, I would have thought those would be a bit dicey, to say the least.
Louise, you should come forward.
Whilst they have agreed to enter into a legal agreement, this hasn't actually been signed yet, so you would still need to attach those refusal reasons, which were number three and number four.
Chairman, just on reason four, members will be aware that the rules have changed in respect of infrastructure contributions since April, so we would suggest a rewording just to say that the required infrastructure contributions have not been satisfactorily secured through a signed agreement, rather than relating it to the S P D and the calculator, as was the previous case. But otherwise, it would be the same reason for refusal. Thank you, chairman.
Chairman, I agree that we should refuse it for, basically, the bulk of the first point, that it was refused for last time. But we've said nothing here, all evening, we have been stressing the safety, the lack of sustainability, the need to walk from this site, the affordable housing element leading to that, and we've got nothing like that in our refusal. What is acceptable on planning grounds, basically? Elizabeth, please.
Thank you, chairman. If members feel that this site is not sustainably located and is isolated, then it would be acceptable to resolve that it is contrary to the requirements of paragraph fifty-five of the N P P F, in that it is, they would result in isolated dwellings without sufficient justification. So, I suggest that would be a standalone reason, and that would pick up the sustainability point. Thank you.
Yeah, could you also put a reason that it's against paragraph one-one-nine of the N P P F? That's the presumption in favour of sustainable development does not apply where development requiring appropriate assessment under Birds and Habitats Directive is being considered. There was a specific request for an appropriate assessment, it was in the document on the thirtieth of April by Natural England, where they specifically requested one. So, according to N P P F one-one-nine, that would knock it out. A very powerful argument.
If you read further down that section and go on to page fourteen, you will note that Natural England withdrew their objection, and this was following the submission of an appropriate assessment to Natural England for consideration.
I have a copy of the assessment. There are, on the second page, there are four items in the assessment, which I would say are incorrect, unevidenced, irrelevant, false claims, completely wrong.
Chairman, if I may respond to that, I think, I understand the points being made, but ultimately, we do have to follow the advice of the government's experts on nature conservation, and that is Natural England. And they've clearly indicated to us that the work which was provided by the developer to allow us to undertake the appropriate assessment is sufficient, that there is not an unacceptable impact on the S P A. So, I think I would urge members to stick to the reasons which have previously been discussed, because actually it's not helpful to our case to add reasons where I'm absolutely certain we would not be supported on appeal.
Sorry, chairman, in view of the large number of comments about the safety aspect of this particular development, it seems strange that we have nothing in about that, and perhaps the officers could advise whether, despite Surrey County Council's views, this committee can in fact include such a reason. And I refer in particular to promoting healthy communities, paragraph sixty-nine and seventy, where safe and accessible developments are mentioned as one of the principles, sixty-nine point three.
Chairman, thank you. You'll see that previously, the scheme was refused on highway grounds for a failure to conclude the legal agreement, which would satisfactorily provide and secure the offered improvements. Now, we recommend, because that agreement hasn't been signed again, that you go forward with that reason, and I think that is a safe highway reason to attach. Clearly, we attached that on your behalf when the scheme was previously refused. If notwithstanding the county highway authority's advice, you still maintain that even with those improvements that will subsequently be offered and secured, you still find the development unsafe. It is open to you to perhaps amend that reason for refusal, but it won't surprise you to hear me say, if the applicant's appeal, you will need to provide robust evidence to back up your finding that the development is unsafe, notwithstanding those improvements. I think my strongest advice to you is, I think that reason for refusal is probably as good as it's going to get in terms of a defensible reason, but it is open to you to amend it and add in your concerns about safety over and above those highway improvements, if you choose to do that. Thank you very much, chairman.
Thank you for that. Can we put in a statement, say, notwithstanding the way the report is written, or the reasoned refusal, we are unhappy with the aspects of road safety, and the improvements do not create a suitably wide, safe zone?
On that basis, chairman, may I suggest a starter to that reason for refusal, along the lines, the council has strong concerns about the safety, highway safety aspects of this proposal, to then continue with the remainder of that reason for refusal, and hopefully that will cover both your concerns about the safety and also the unsatisfactory nature of the proposal as it stands, that it's not accompanied by the legal agreement. So, the council has concerns about the safety, highway safety nature of this proposal.
Councillor Ellis, do you have something else to add?
Just only to add, chairman, to what Elizabeth's already said, perhaps we could stress that our major concern is schoolchildren, and I do think that is important.
Councillor Frost.
Sorry, chairman, I don't go along with that. As far as I'm concerned, it's the safety of everybody using that road. We've highlighted children, that's a very emotive one. But if, you know, somebody's in a wheelchair or buggy or whatever, they have problems along that road. So, I would hate us just to talk about children, when as far as I'm concerned... So I would hate us just to talk about children, when as far as I'm concerned, it's in my ward, and it's everybody that uses that road on foot or in a wheelchair.
Thank you for that comment. We can keep the point about children specifically out, that would be a good idea, I think. Are we in general supportive of the points that have been brought forward, and are we ready now to vote for a refusal? Have we got a proposal from a person for refusal, a member?
We have Ellis and Coburn.
Oh, yes, we've already had that proposal, thank you very much. So can I have a show of hand for those who support a refusal and the reasons which we've now discussed and written down?
Yep, that's unanimous, are you abstaining?
No.
Unanimous.
I support the refusal. That, we have a refusal, that concludes the meeting. Thank you very much for all your input, thank you to the members of the public. You've been very patient, we hope you're happy with the result.